This conference will now be recorded.
Okay Salvatore, I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my belief.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a real estate support service and you were sent information looking for a personal property declaration, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And I neglected to file, and when I got the bill, it certainly got my attention. The company doesn't have any assets, so when I did get the notice, it didn't pour judgment. I decided, or I thought that it wouldn't be necessary since there are no assets.
Okay, but you're filed with the state of Connecticut under a name, is that, is that true?
Uh, no, just at the town hall, just in Wallingford.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah, the plan was to set up a company, but it never came to pass.
Okay. So Mr. Jackson, what are we actually looking at here? He's filed something?
So Mr. Chairman, we picked this business up probably through the
Hello?
Office where they file a, you know, DVA during businesses. We picked it up and we had to make an estimate because there was no filing. The other, Mr. Salvatore you know, testifies that they have no assets. Normally, we would ask them to provide a copy of the tax return showing that they had no assets for that business. And I'll give you an example, by way of example. A real estate holding company, for example, they have no assets other than the real estate. And of course, we taxed the real estate separately, so the actual holding company itself may not be an operating business other than to hold real estate. There may be other examples. And we, I think we advised the other party to be prepared to provide documentation at this hearing to show this board that they have no assets which they are claiming. And we have not seen any documentation that we could, you know, make a determination based upon. So I would ask the chairman, to the chairman, there is documentation. There's a reason we'd like to evaluate that.
So Salvatore, is this something you're going to use, dissolve, not use?
Use in the future, yes.
Use in the future?
Yes.
Okay, because currently, your tax liability is thirty-six dollars here, alright? We don't want to.
Yeah, I know, understand. I almost don't take up your time with this, but.
Yeah. If it's, if it's some kind of business, they're gonna be looking for some kind of list of something. I mean, if you're a business, you gotta have something, right? So right now, you're sitting at a thousand dollars with twenty-five percent penalty on assessed value for twelve hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, if you're going forward and you, you know, just file the paperwork every year and you keep this thing holding, you know, your liability is twenty-nine dollars or, you know, whatever.
The twelve fifty and the two fifty penalty that got my attention, the tax you're talking about, I'll just.
The tax really doesn't, it's not two fifty, okay?
Okay.
So your total liability is thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay, let me not take any more of your time and I'll stop this call and say that.
Okay, so do I hear a motion for the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, no change.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Kevin, I believe you have Mr. Mike Stone, when you're ready, just letting you know.
Okay, we're gonna move on to hearing number twenty twenty dash one sixty-seven. Owen Stone. And I'm speaking, I'm going to be swearing in Mike Stone. Mike Stone, are you Owen Stone or you're not?
This is, this is, this is Mark Stone, his son, his son.
Okay, it says Mike Stone here. Okay, did Owen Stone give you some paperwork to represent him or to? Does he filled out the paperwork? And he's not the one speaking?
Okay, no, he didn't give me the paperwork, but I might, the thing they sent me to purpose of this, on this literature here, it's Stone Sand and Gravel LLC, which is, you know, my father owns, owns this, the property where we're at, but Stone Sand and Gravel is my, is my company?
Um. Again.
Trying to help, Mr. Chairman, I will.
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Okay, so, you know, our account shows Stone Sand and Gravel LLC, that is correct, at One Lone Place Road here in Wallingford.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you, sir. You know, and we've placed a market value, let me see, you know, let me go with assessed value. We've placed an assessment of sixty-six hundred and sixty dollars. Know that there's a bulldozer, there's a backhoe, there's a forklift there, there's other miscellaneous equipment, but those are the three main pieces of equipment that are located at the property. I think the appellate had put down either zero or very diminished amount. And, you know, we disagree, we think there should be some minimal assessment, and we've come up with sixty-six hundred and sixty dollars. The chief appraiser is here on the line as well, if you have any questions, but.
So, so first of all, Mark Stone is, I missed Stone Sand and Gravel LLC, is that, did I identify, okay?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And to the benefit of the board, Mr. Chairman, I think we provided a couple of photographs. You've got those tonight. This property is located next to the train tracks, just, I think, kind of behind where the McDonald's is.
Yes, I'm, I'm familiar with the property.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Okay, so. So what are, what are we actually discussing here?
Are you speaking to me, sir?
Yes, you, you say you have personal property there of fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, what I did was, how I do it, this, everything here is both basically my father's and myself's, but over the years, my mother, the accountant that my mother had when she was alive took care of everything. And when she passed away, we got another accountant, and basically, he took over where she left off. But, and I don't know how to do the devaluation and such as that, so I couldn't, you know, answer that question. But my accountant, he's the one, I give him everything, and, you know, as far as, I noticed some, you know, a lot of these equipment, for example, most of it, you know, they were just machines, some of the ones we were describing, they were bought in like nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-nine, and they've always been here in Wallingford, so we have paid taxes on them. But I, he, he's the one that kind of figures out how the, how that works, which I really don't, so I couldn't answer that, you know. I couldn't speak for that because I don't understand how that type of thing works, but that's why I give this information to him and let him, you know, when he gives me my paperwork, I just rely on that.
Do you know if your accountant filed the paperwork? I mean, I'm, I'm, it's looking like he hasn't filed anything.
Oh, you mean, you mean my personal property paper? You mean my, you know, like every, every year?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, no, and when, and matter of fact, when I got this notice, the first thing, as soon as I saw on there that it said a penalty for late or not filing, the first thing I asked the girl, when I went up to the tax department, and I showed her that, because she's the one that told me how to go about going through this to get the, make an appointment. And I said, did I, I did file this correctly? I know I did, and she looked and it was filed, for absolutely sure. I mean, and I, and I, there's a copy, I think I would have a copy here, because it gets stamped when I, when I go there, I think. So I would have my receipt or whatever, when I, when I brought it up there, I would have something, because I make sure I get all that stuff.
Well, there's a big gap here, there's a big gap in this whole appeal here, because I don't see any, you know, I don't see that list. And I also, you know, see a penalty, and when there's a penalty, it says to me, not filed. Is that, is that true, Mr. Jackson?
It's what records, that is correct, sir.
So, you know.
I mean, I'm, I'm where I have my things right now, in other words, I'm not too good on, when I go to town and, you know, do, do all these different transactions and stuff. But when I go there, normally would the girl at the counter, when I bring it to her, would she, would she take that like stamp thing and stamp something on it and then hand me the copy of it? Because I, I can probably, if I go in my shop here, I could probably put my hands on it right now, if, if that'll help. But I know, you know, I make sure I do all these papers for, when it comes to the town stuff, I make sure I do it, so I know I did. And when I went up there, like I said, the only reason when I got this thing in the mail is the first thing I did was go up there and see the girl in the office there that comes up to the window. And my first question was, you know, just to double check, because I mean, you know, I wasn't gonna tell her she was doing it wrong, but I knew that I, that I went up there and put it in. So, and she checked for me, and she, you know, she, she took my information and she went in the back, you know, talked to somebody and came back and said, no, you, you filed it. So, I mean, that's all I can really tell you, sir, but you can tell me what is.
Right, right now, what we're, what we're talking about here is you owe the town a hundred and ninety-four dollars for taxes, okay?
Uh-huh.
That's, that's what you owe. That's where we're, that's where we're heading, alright?
Okay.
So, a hundred and ninety-four dollars. Or we start to dig deeper and deeper and deeper, but if you have, because again, by what I see here, okay, this is an estimate because we don't have something. And a twenty-five percent penalty was added to it, so right now, your assessed value for whatever you have on the property there is six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And if you have a backhoe and two bulldozers that are part of that six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, will, will, whether you bought them in nineteen sixty-eight or not, they're still worth more than six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. So, I think, you know, at this point, you need to kind of.
No, no, I, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and the thing is, you know, because I don't have any idea when I see, when it, when, when a paper comes and changes that much, I don't know what to expect, because I don't know, in other words, that's a big jump, and then I don't know about having enough money to do the, you know, to make sure I have it. But, you know, I didn't realize that that was the cost, so basically, like, for example, if that's what it is, and I didn't have the penalty, it would be even a little bit less.
Yeah.
You know, in other, in other words, if I filed it on time, I would have been in better, you know, I mean, I know I put it on time, but.
You're paying, the penalty is costing you thirty-five, forty dollars.
Okay, alright, I didn't, I didn't have any idea what the numbers add up to on that, so I mean, basically, does it sound like the best thing to do for everyone, which, you know, I can absorb that, that's not a problem. I mean, should I just, just call it a day and conclude this? I mean, is that?
I would do that, and also, I would talk to your accountant, because if, if he said he filed it with us, we don't have.
Well, he wouldn't, I mean, I, I, he wouldn't, it would, it would have been me, I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, I'm gonna go along with what you're saying, but I know I did, because I make sure I do that, so I know. And like I said, I'm gonna check through my papers just to double, just to make sure, because I'd like, you know, I know I, I'm gonna, but, you know, just to make sure I'm on top of it, but that's, that's why I make sure I'm doing these things, you know, properly, that's my main concern.
Okay, do I hear a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to no change.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you folks, and have a good night.
You too. Mr. Jackson, did Delta Arsenal go to the consent agenda?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on Delta Arsenal recommending that we transfer that case to the consent agenda, and let me explain why. In the past, it has always been our practice to extend an extension for filing to all manufacturers to the state, and the state deadline of December fifteenth. So in other words, supposed to file by November first, but they can get an extension the last day that the state allows, December fifteenth. In the past, we have always extended that. We've always given that extension.
Okay.
In this case this year, and I have to take the blame myself, and I want to apologize to the board. Because I guess it was because it was a revaluation year, and we had so much going on, it just slipped past me, let's say, you know, flew under my radar, and they were, they were penalized, but I would have normally, in any other year, I would have normally given them an extension until December fifteenth. So it's not that they didn't file by December fifteenth. They filed, I think it was December fourth, and, you know, and for some reason, we, you know, we, we denied their exemption. And in the past, I would have, I would have always granted that, so I'm gonna ask the board, I'm gonna accept the responsibility myself, that it was an oversight on my part. I'm gonna ask the board to just allow me to grant them that extension retroactively. There is a filing fee for the extension of fifty dollars, which I understand they came into the office today and made that payment, so. It's, it's, it's different from other cases where manufacturers didn't file at all, or did not file by December fifteenth. These folks did file within that timeframe, and for some, for one reason or another, our staff kind of dropped the balls. I'm asking the board.
Okay, do I hear?
Correct that.
A, a motion from the board for hearing number twenty twenty dash one eight oh, Delta Arsenal LLC.
Mr. Chairman, make a.
From, to move it to the consent agenda.
Make a motion for twenty twenty dash one eight oh, to move to consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Do you know what else in the waiting room at this point? I'm gonna get up and stretch my legs, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be back myself, I mean, the next block is seven to eight, it looks like we're gonna be a little bit of a while with one appellate here, so. Okay, eight o'clock, let's take a five, six minute break and be back for, not eight o'clock, seven o'clock.
Yeah, good to hear you, Shelby.
I, I think we're gonna need to start calling some of the later appeals and ask them to log in sooner. So that we don't, you know, sit around doing nothing, I think, because we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. So, you wanna do that, you wanna leave that, and one of us should start calling them, and I would start with the latest, just.
Latest one, so.
Is that something you could work on, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Just trying to find the schedule here.
If, if, if you don't have it, I can do it from my end, I, I've got it all here. I just want to coordinate between the both of us, because if I'm calling, then you're gonna need to answer the chairman's questions, if the board has questions or whatever.
Yep.
Just those, those questions, one of us needs to.
Alright, so I'll start with the last one first and go in that order.
I would, yeah, it's not, just tell them, say, look, the board is running ahead of schedule, call in at any time.
Okay.
Call in, and then the chairman will, you know, bring them in, you know, case by case basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
My meaning is these getting fired, you know? We all lived through the pandemic. We all had to do what we had to do. Oh, speaking of that. You don't have to. That's. I'm sorry. Right now, you're still in the bathroom.
Hello?
Yes, caller six. Please identify yourself.
My name is Peter DiNardo.
Okay, I think, are we all back now? Mr. Jackson?
I'm back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Coons? Shelley, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna go to Hearing number twenty twenty dash one twenty-two. Okay, so hearing number is twenty twenty-one twenty-two is one oh two, one oh four, South Turnpike. Mr. DiNardo, I swear you in?
Okay.
I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
It is.
Thank you. One oh two, one oh four, South Turnpike Road. You've placed the market value of seven twenty thousand on the property and the town currently has a market value of one million four hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Right. So, right, so obviously, it's substantially different. To give you some background information on this property, we acquired it by way of taking over the debt on the four buildings, not just this building. And at the time we took it over from the bank, I believe the outstanding debt was between one point three and one point four million dollars. So, that was, that's, you know, our basis in the property. During the time we acquired it, we had to put some money into the building we're referring to, which was leased to Masonic Care. However, the improvements were highly specific to that tenant. And that tenant only stayed for four years. So, you know, I only have what I paid for it, what the bank's appraisal was at that time, which I didn't submit it because it's a little old. I believe it's a December two thousand fourteen appraisal on all the buildings, not this one alone. But, you know, and also other sales in the Wallingford area that I've come across recently, you know, which I believe supports my, you know, a value conclusion closer to mine than that of the towns.
Okay, so, I mean, we did we did adjust the assessed value prior to this revale. The assessed value was one million four hundred thousand.
Right.
Bring the property down to nine hundred and eighty-five, five hundred, assessed value.
Right, you brought it down from around two million, I guess. Yeah, it was a bit of an assessed value, two million, and I understand that, you know, but what I would implore on you is when the bank, you know, was about to take back the property and they sold the debt, they had appraisals, you know, that were close to the value of the debt on the property. So, while, you know, the value, and frankly, the value to me as a developer is different when it's leased because it's leased and it's on a net lease basis. So, that supports a completely different value than as vacant. This building's a hundred percent vacant. It's in a flood zone, which costs about forty thousand a year for flood insurance because it is financed. We have to keep five hundred thousand worth of insurance on it. That's about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. And as I tell you, I've called brokers. We call the people in economic development. A broker actually said, and this is a broker that used to lease those properties, they wanted to get paid each time they show it. So, I mean, you know, you know, notwithstanding, I appreciate the reduction you gave, but I don't think it's anywhere near where the market is for an office property in that location, unfortunately. I mean, I, you know, I look at this as we made a mistake. I wish I didn't take it back for the million three. I'm being honest with you because now it's just a drain to me. All said and, you know, for all intents and purposes, I mean, I can't give it back to the bank, right? Because I have the money to pay them and they know that. So, I can't just walk away like the other borrower. But what I will say is there's some similar sales that I'm familiar with in Wallingford, like the building where Quest is on Sterling Drive, you know, eighty-eight thousand feet. So, that's a bigger building, twelve acres of land, more land, not in the flood zone, laboratory, and it's partly leased back, and that was sold for two point three million in two thousand nineteen. So, you know.
Peter, I have a question. This is Carl, one of the members.
Hi, Carl.
Do you have any, any current documents supporting some of the things you bring out? I mean, appraisal, bank documents, something comparable to the properties that you're making comparisons to?
Well, I'm not an appraiser, and no, I don't have a current appraisal. The appraisal I referred to is older. I'm happy to submit that, but it's, you know, it's five years old. So, you know, generally, you know, is that relevant? Is that something you'd wanna look at?
That's from twenty fourteen. That's
Too old, right?
Very, very old. That's not a, that wouldn't
Right.
Right.
So, we haven't had the need for a recent appraisal unless, you know, we end up in a court situation where we would have this appraised. And, you know, frankly, you know, the way these hearings work, you know, sometimes they come up faster and then all the appraisers in the world seem to be busy at the same time. Otherwise, you know, I would have liked to submit information to you. I can, you know, we can try to have something put together quickly for this board if you think that would be of a benefit. You know, but we'd appraise, you know, this has always been appraised as four buildings, four, you know, one property, even though they're separate parcels, they're separate tax parcels, you know, so it was always considered a combined situation. That's how we took, you know, that's how we took it over. So, you know, and of course, the Sterling sale is something that's of public knowledge available through the assessor.
How much was the Sterling sale for?
Two point three million in April of two thousand nineteen, and Quest took a lease on a substantial portion of the space.
And how many square feet are in the building?
Eighty-eight thousand.
So, that's what you're basing these values on, is twenty-something a foot, square foot?
Well, you know, I base it on, you know, on that, you know, depending on how you value the land and building separately. And the fact that when we took over the debt on this property, this is not a property I've been involved with long term, but in two thousand fifteen, when we took over the loans, a total of a million three and change was owed on the buildings. There was a little bit of back taxes, I think nineteen thousand dollars. And he had a potential for a lease with Masonic Care for twenty-four thousand feet on one oh two to one oh four South Turnpike. So, my cost was the value of the loan plus the improvement. And I, you know, obviously, I thought they would have stayed longer because we did have to do some work to that building. It was renovated. It's in nice condition. It's a nicer condition than, you know, it was prior to that, but it's office space. So, I mean, quite frankly, if you asked me to take over someone's loan at a million five on this right now, I wouldn't do it because I can't give the office away and it's just costing me money to carry. I'd rather keep my, you know, preserve cash and cash flow, but I can't unring the bell. If you had to sell it right now, you know, I think it would sell. Look, the three Sterling sale was an arms-length transaction from Quest. It was offered to me. We talked about it. There was a leaseback on it. And frankly, as a, you know, a developer of property, you only look at, you know, yeah, there's value to a building, but we look at it and rely on, heavily on the rental stream. Otherwise, it's just a piece of inventory to me. So, yeah, I mean, if you offered this to me today for twenty a foot, I don't, I wouldn't take it. I wouldn't write a check out for it. It's just not something I would do because I made a mistake, you know, on the market there and thought the office market was stronger. I didn't realize the amount of office that was coming up online in the area. So, things changed. I think the buildings are nice. They've got courtyards that are interesting and to me, better than most office buildings. But that's not what, you know, I'm seeing and hearing from brokers. If a broker wants to get paid to show a building, you know you got problems. And that's my point that I'm trying to make with this property. So, what is it worth? As I say, I'm not an appraiser, you know, if you wanna look at one before you make a decision, you know, I don't know how quickly I can get one, but I will get one if I'm appealing to court. You know, because, you know, what else can I do? Put yourself in my shoes.
Correct. And we don't have, you know, we understand the Sterling, you know, we're, you know, our value per square foot quickly placed on these buildings is, you know, somewhere in the forty to forty-five dollar range. Which, which has, which has been reduced. I mean, we did reduce this particular, you know, property by, you know, over half a million dollars. So, you know, I think we're, we're working with you. It may not be, you know, exactly what you're looking for, but, you know, we're aware of the problems in the commercial office market. But also, I mean, we were working with you and, you know, forty, forty-five dollars. There's plenty of forty, forty-five dollar office, you know, space around Wallingford. I don't know, you know, again, whether it's selling, whether it's not selling, you know. So, we're not out of, we're not out of line with this.
Well, yeah, I mean, of course, I point to sales or pointed to one sale that's lower. What I'd also point your attention to is this building is assessed at two and a half times what, you know, some of the buildings that are half the size on that same parcel, part of that same strip are valued at. So, you know, that's not really consistent because this, the larger building is basically like two of the others put together, if you will. So, some of the others are in the value range of the assessed value range on, say, ninety-eight is three ninety-three, a hundred is four forty-six. So, you know, it's, it's still, you know, it's still a bit more than those as far as valuation wise, when frankly, sometimes you're better off with a smaller building that's easily, more easily divisible than a big building that's really not meant to be divided. If, you know, from a practical aspect of leasing something, there are more people for small space than a twenty-four thousand foot building, you know, right now. And it's not just Wallingford. I'm not attacking Wallingford per se. In general, offices is very difficult. I know you say you could get forty-five dollar a foot space, but, you know, you can get a vacant building in Stanford for a hundred bucks a foot. It might cost, you know, whatever it costs to build it, it doesn't even matter. You know, the former Swiss Bank building, I mean, those buildings and some of the other big vacant buildings in Stanford traded at well below, you know, what the former market would have indicated, well below replacement costs. And frankly, that's a market where people were paying, you know, in the thirties per square foot for rent. You know, the question is, can you lease it? And that's why, you know, lenders have done some deals like that. Also, in Norwalk markets that I'm more familiar with, I mean, a vacant office building is anyone's guess what it would sell for because the cost to maintain and upkeep, taxes, insurance, maintenance is very high versus an industrial building. If these were industrial, I wouldn't be on the phone right now because they'd probably be leased. And, you know, I'd look at the numbers internally and say, "Okay, this makes sense." But frankly, you know, I don't think, you know, the value is where the town believes it to be. And I could only point to that sale. I haven't looked at all the comps in Wallingford lately, but, you know, and I'm not gonna, you know, I pulled that eighty thousand foot building because that's similar in size to this. You know, these four buildings together. I'm not gonna talk about something that's a million square feet or something that's five thousand feet because that's not a fair comp, in my opinion. You know, but that's, you know, that's my position. When do you guys make a decision? Or ladies and gentlemen, when do you make a decision?
Tonight.
Tonight, okay. I didn't know, you know, if there was a lead time, a lag time where I could try to get something. But it takes two, right now, the appraisers with whom we work are slammed, you know, they just don't have the time.
Mr. Jackson, I mean, you have reviewed this and after the revale, you've adjusted the assessed values. I mean, I think if we had something tonight from an appraiser would certainly, you know, have, we would, the board would have something to compare to your work and appraisers' work, what have you. But the fact that you've adjusted downward already, to me, you know, you've taken, you've taken some of these issues into consideration.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Can the board hear me? Because I know I've had trouble with my microphone in the past. So.
I think now is better than maybe you were earlier, so.
Okay, and Mr. DiNardo, can you hear me? Okay?
I can.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. So, you know, yes, you know, and, you know, Mr. DiNardo and I had a conversation prior to this meeting, a couple of months back, I think, during the revaluation process. And I acknowledged that, yes, the values of these office buildings, you know, are coming down. And that's the trend. And we followed, we tried to follow that trend. And I think you'll see on all of these buildings, we have reduced by a significant amount the value from where it was in two thousand and fifteen to what it is today. And let me move on from that to say that, you know, fifteen, the Sterling Drive property, for example, it was sold for two point three million. Lot of condition issues on the interior of that building. Because if you look at the exterior, the building is a beautiful looking building from the outside. But on the inside, there are significant condition issues. And for anyone who would purchase that building to repurpose it, would require a significant amount of tenant improvements, a significant investment to really repurpose that building and get it back fully rented. That building also, by the way, so we're sitting, I think, our appraisal on that building, somewhere on three point two or three point three. I'll have to, you know, make allowances from my memory. I've got a lot of numbers in my head right now. We're north of three million is our assessment, is our appraisal on that building. And a noteworthy fact, it is listed for sale at over five point two million. Now, that's not to say that they will sell it for five point two million. And I realize that. However, that's, that's, you know, that, that property right there is really not a good comparable, in my opinion. It's one property with eighty-eight thousand square feet. It's listed for sale at five point two million. You know, it was bought up at a time when it was almost completely vacant. I know that the Quest Diagnostics, which was the major tenant, you know, had really downsized their operations very significantly. And that's why the building sold at that, at that, that lower price. And we're also seeing other office buildings sell for, you know, significantly lower prices that we have seen in the past. We recognize that. Recognize that, and we tried to factor that in to these buildings here that DiNardo Enterprises, you know, own and operate on South Turnpike Road. I guess what I would say is, Mr. DiNardo, through you, Mr. Chairman, is that if we had an appraisal, if we had a little bit more, something a little bit more to go on, compare reductions that we made against what, you know, another, you know, another appraiser would come up with, we might have a better conversation than we're able to have tonight. Right now, what we have is the town has made significant reductions. And Mr. DiNardo feels that it's not enough. And I just don't see any documentation that support.
Well, are we talking about, if you're talking about one oh two and one oh four, or are we talking about the other three buildings at the same time?
About all of the buildings that you have on your field, sir, except for the one that has the apartment building of the one that's up front.
Right, that was rejected.
A vacant parcel of land. So, there's those two separate from this. You know, I know the Board of Education is renting one of your buildings and, you know, I don't, I don't know the status of that lease. Maybe the board would like to hear about that. I don't know.
And I Well, the board is still in the building. They're one of the only tenants left. But on the other buildings, the value wasn't changed significantly. One was increased, one, the assessed value was increased on ninety-four to ninety-six from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. And ninety-eight was reduced by, the assessed value was reduced by twenty thousand and one hundred, which is the one occupied by the board, was reduced from five sixty to four forty-six. So, that was the biggest reduction, you know, in value on these buildings. But the other two were pretty close to where they were, you know, and one's higher, one's lower. So, it's basically a wash on ninety-four to ninety-eight. You know, those two buildings. One building is completely vacant and needs substantial work. You know, you touch upon something saying, you know, a You know, you touch upon something saying, you know, a building needs substantial work. But any office building generally needs a heavy amount of tenant improvement from tenant to tenant. You know, so yes, these buildings, you know, I think they're maintained pretty, you know, well. Um, but inside, getting another tenant in, um, you know, I wouldn't, I would suggest it's going to take a good amount of work to reposition. You know, there's old air conditioning systems that have to be replaced. There's always things to do. Um, as far as ninety four to ninety six South Turnpike goes, which is partially occupied by Cerebral Palsy of Westchester, you know, their lease was about to expire and we worked with them as a nonprofit. You know, we're, we're not really collecting the typical lease amount. They're just, you know, they, they said basically after COVID and the funding cuts and the fact that they couldn't bring people in, they wanted to hand the keys back. So, uh, in, to, you know, in an effort to keep them there and hopefully stabilize them in the future, you know, we agreed to just take whatever they can pay because, A, it's a nonprofit. It's not typically the position I take, but rather than have three buildings fully vacated, um, we felt, you know, due to the fact that it's a charitable operation and, uh, you know, we believe what they're saying based on the last year, uh, you know, it made sense for us to work with them. So, you know, while I appreciate the modification and reduction on one oh two to one oh four, it still doesn't directly correspond to the other buildings because it's still higher on a per square foot basis. And the other ones weren't really lowered, uh, with the exception of one hundred. So, um, you know, if, you know, that, that's been my position, um.
So am I hearing that one, one, one oh two, one oh four is okay, but you want to talk about the other ones?
Well, because you mentioned the other buildings.
The chairman may want to take these one at a time.
Okay, fair enough.
In a way of that.
Yes, I, I would, I would take them one at a time. And, and again, I'm in, I'm in, um, uh, the same mode as, as Mr. Jackson. I, I think appraisals and a little more backup on all of this, um, would have helped here, uh, because I know Mr. Jackson in, in his office have gone through it, um, and reduced it. And I, I know you're, you know, you're looking for more, but I, I think we need more information, uh, as a board. You know, why, um, why it should be reduced? Again, just, we're just not hearing enough, you know, backup, form, formal backup. Because, um, this, this is, you know, some significant, um, dollars for you and for the town and, and, um, I think there needs to be, again, more work, uh.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I'm hearing you, uh, do you want a reserved decision on these until I can present an appraisal, or is going to be denied and then I'm appealing them to court? I'm just trying to understand. You know, because I'm, I'm happy to present an appraisal to the board. I just, you know, right now, it's been a, a different, uh, you know, difficult process for us.
Our board operates under, you come, you provide us with the information and, and we make a decision.
Right, okay.
If, if it's over a million dollars on some of these, uh, it's, again, in the best interest of the town and of the property owner sometimes to, to do it differently than coming here because it's a lot more involved. And, and what you're discussing here, there's a lot more. The market, you know, the tenant issue, there's a lot of things here and a lot of daily update in the, in the commercial office market business that is changing the value. Okay, um, these values were set back in October, um, first of, of two thousand and twenty. I, I know the commercial office market is, is changing, you know, every day, every week, every month, since then, before then, you know, and, and we know that it's, it's not, you know, going in, in the positive direction. But we, as a town, um, you know, we really need to have, you know, appraisals and backup that are, you know, supporting, uh, what you're requesting here, so. So, yes, I mean, I think, I think, uh, we make decisions the night we hear you. And if, you know, especially i- i- in a group here like you have, um, the alternative means with appraisals and, and, you know, Superior Court may be a, a better situation for you to express, um, you know, your value and, and for discussion. With, with backup. I don't know how long it would take to get an appraiser, but we, you know, we do wrap this up, uh, shortly. Uh, we don't, this doesn't go on forever, these appraisal, uh, or these, uh, appeal meetings, so.
How long do they go on for?
We could go through them one by one.
Sure.
Where we can vote on all of them.
Uh, do them one by one, that's how they're, uh.
Okay, alright.
Impressed.
So, let's, let's back up to the where we are here. Um, so the discussion is, is hearing number twenty twenty dash one twenty two. And it's one oh two, one oh four, South Turnpike Road. The talent is, is putting a market value of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars on the property. And the town currently has a value of one million four hundred and seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Based on our discussion, do I hear a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for hearing number twenty twenty dash one twenty two for one oh two dash one oh four, South Turnpike Road. No change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to hearing number twenty twenty one twenty one. That's one hundred, South Turnpike Road. Mr. Donato has placed the market value of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the property. And the town currently has a a value of six hundred and thirty seven thousand, six hundred dollars market value. Okay, Mr. Donato, so, um, we might have talked about this in the last discussion, but if you can, um, go through this building individually so we understand what your, uh, appeal is, is asking, or, or what you're stating.
Right. Well, this building is actually leased by the Board of Education. Um, you know, so this one, you know, it's, it's a bit different than the others because it's not a vacant building. But that said, you know, the only way to value these is, you know, because they're, you know, they're right in the same script. They're the same type of construction, same size sites, or at least this is, um, along with the adjacent three. Uh, you know, it's a similar property. And, you know, for the reasons I stated about the other building, I don't think, you know, the town's value is, is supportable. Um, you know, I will point you to another building that's a little closer by, you know, if you guys would like to look. And I, again, you know, we don't have appraisal, but, uh, one hundred and ten, South Turnpike Road is twenty five thousand feet and it's twenty six thousand, three hundred thirteen square feet, two acres. And the town's appraisal is three hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Assessment's two sixty four, and that's the building owned by Masonic Care Corporation, which is exactly the size of the building that you're saying to me is worth a million four. Um, the building we're on right now is half the size of one ten, South Turnpike. So again, um, you know, you did reduce the assessment from five sixty to four forty six, probably based on overall market conditions. Um, but, uh, you know, I would implore on you that that's not enough, um, you know, for this property.
Chairman, sir.
Okay. Um, so you say it's one ten, South Turnpike Road, right?
Yeah, that's an adjacent property. And I was just looking online, um, at it. You know, I, I had mentioned the other Sterling property, but this is another comp, I think, you know, to, to my building, seeing it's next door.
Mr. Jackson, do you, uh, have, uh, information about that building, one ten, South Turnpike?
So, Mr. Chairman, I am working from memory. My knowledge of the building, I'm not looking at an actual document.
Okay.
I would tell you that Sonic Care building. So it's divided into two accounts. That property is partially exempt and partially taxable. Sonic Care Organization, you know, they own a hospital and much of the work that they do is considered to be charitable. It's exempt. Some of the work that they do, we have been able to tax them for. And this is by way of legal opinions over the years. So that building there, um, we've divided that into a couple of different accounts, portion of which is taxable, portion of which is exempt. So take just the square footage of the building, based on the taxable amount. It's not really given accurate account of what we're doing there.
Okay, so it's, it's not, uh.
It's, it's not, it's not a comparable situation. And I'd be, I'd be more than happy to send Mr. Donato, I believe there's two accounts. And I know we have our chief appraiser on the line. He may have more knowledge about it than I do. That's my recollection. He'd be happy to send Mr. Donato a copy of the accounts to show the breakdown that building was taxable. That's, that's something that really it, it really doesn't apply as a com- as a comparable property.
Okay. Now, withstanding what's available in the public, you know, online these days, you're saying it's, it's a, it's a different, because generally not tax exempt property is still has a value that's shown online. And either it's, uh, you know, the tax exempt, or maybe a portion, or a pilot is paid in my experience. But you're saying this one, the numbers you use are inaccurate or don't relate at all to the property. Basically, that's what you're saying to me.
Well, I guess what I'm saying, sir, is that I would, I would prefer to give you an exact document to review because, you know, Wallingford, as you know, you don't have an awful lot of online internet access or resources. So I'm not sure what you're looking at. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm looking at the, the, you know, it says one ten, South Turnpike Road, Vision appraisal. You place these online and Vision attributed a value to the building as indicated by me, three seventy seven four, and they show a value for improvements and they show the land value at eighty thousand. And then the improvements are twenty six thousand, three hundred and thirteen square feet. And it says it's two point oh two acres. So, you know, if it's, without the information you have, just looking at this, um, you know, obviously, it's, it's a much different number. And it was substantially reduced from your, your, you know, from the last time, from two thousand and fifteen. Um, you know, so the numbers were substantially reduced. They were still quite low, you know, much lower, um, you know, than what we're even asking for. But, you know, I do like to point this to the board's attention and to, uh, everyone's attention. And that's what I'm looking at, so, um.
So again, what you're looking at on the Vision appraisal website is only taxable property. Not seeing the tax exempt portion
Okay.
of that, of that property. Wasn't happy to share that with you.
And again, I think this goes back to the prior.
Getting the full picture, that's, that's the point.
Yeah. I, I, I think this, you know, I, I'm going back to this is not, these are not things that we can do on the fly. We need to have, you know, documents and, and, you know, backup, to really have a discussion about all of this. Because it's, it's too critical to you as a, as a building owner and, and to the town now that we, we make sure we get this right. And, um, we don't see what you're looking at, Mr. Donato. And we don't see what Mr. Jackson might be looking at. So we're, we're, you know, we're, we're operating without facts, uh, paperwork, uh, what have you. So.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, and that may, would make your job virtually impossible to do it like this because if you don't have anything, you know, you're not gonna just take, uh, you know, I, I understand you'd want, um, I get it. Um, what I will say is when an appraisal is done, you know, and I referred to it, a two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen appraisal. But, you know, arguably, any appraisal now would be lower than that time because the market has changed substantially, in my opinion, for that type of building. Um, but, you know, I, I'm not a certifi- you know, I'm not an appraiser. But I just know the numbers of what I had in my file, um, from when the bank, you know, was still in, you know, operating or taking over the buildings.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think, seeing an appraisal for two thousand and fourteen, uh, would, would leave an impression that maybe, you know, it's not good for the discussion. You know, because it is, you know, two thousand and twenty one, um, is not, uh, gonna be, you know, good for office space. I mean, it's just two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one, um, we know the values are, are going in the wrong direction, so.
Right.
You know, the town, the town has, you know, did reduce the assessed value here from five sixty to four forty six, four hundred. Um, again, without, without a lot of backup and, and, uh, you know, factual backup, I think the board will, will have to vote, make a decision on this property. So do I hear a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on hearing number twenty twenty dash one twenty one, one hundred, South Turnpike Road, no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll go to twenty twenty dash one twenty ninety eight, South Turnpike Road. Mr. Donato's placed a value of three hundred and sixty thousand on it, and the town currently has placed a market value of five sixty one eight hundred. Again, uh, it was reduced from four hundred and twenty thousand to three hundred and ninety three thousand, three hundred. And the square feet in the building, uh, twelve thousand, six hundred and fourteen. Mr. Donato, I, I think it's the same.
It is. It's, um, it's the same size, you know, as far as I, my understanding, you know, with, you know, online, it shows that these buildings are a couple hundred square feet, uh, apart. But, you know, we've always, you know, considered them, uh, very similar to their, you know, w- we, we attempt to lease them as the same size. We don't really make a distinguishing adjustment, you know. They, they're all on about two acres, give or take, and they're all about twelve thousand square feet, except for the bigger one, which is twenty four. Um, although the town shows one oh two to one oh four at thirty thousand feet. I never knew what they're measuring because I had it measured, um, by, uh, you know, InfoQuest. And, you know, w- w- we have a twenty four, a twenty percent discrepancy there. But this one's basically the same as the other. You lowered it, as you said, by thirty grand. Um, and, you know.
And I'm coming up again. And I'm coming up again with, you know, forty four dollars a square foot, uh, only, only because that's easy to, to.
Yeah, understood.
And it's a smaller building, uh, like you said, um, smaller units to, to rent. You know, uh, whi- which is true. I mean, if you're gonna find anything coming back, it's gonna be smaller entities, not, not large entities. Buildings and COVID and, and large office spaces are, you know, going to be, uh.
You can't give them away, but yeah, I agree with you. This building needs some work. I mean, it needs, um, you know, an interior, it, it needs a good amount of work comparative to the Board of Education building. And I suppose you guys would argue that that's, you know, there's some degree or some difference in value. Because the building that's leased by the board is in better shape inside, outside are equal. But, you know, this one, you know, could need some heavy improvement money. And, and that's sort of the, the elephant in the room. Because based on the market, it's hard to sustain, it's hard to justify the costs with the increases in construction. Of doing a heavy interior improvement on a building where you could only get a certain amount of money in rent. You basically aren't gonna spend the same, you know, the amount of money for, that you get in rent. For, um, you know, uh, for improvements, because then you're just wa- it's a wash. You don't try not to do that, notwithstanding what we did for me Sonicare, which was a bad deal. But yeah, this building is, uh, you know, it's, it was reduced by thirty thousand.
So, um, again, I, I mean, I think it's a similar. Intent by the town as the other two properties and, you know, I think, uh, you know, you're gonna need. An appraisal, you're gonna need maybe, uh, you know. A walkthrough, what, whatever to show, you know, improvements necessary, something to justify. I mean, I didn't, you know, your, your, your values are, you know, half of what the town are. Uh, you're in the, you know, the twenty dollar range. I mean, it's just the spread is, is, um. You know.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I understand your job and, uh, the, the board's job and I appreciate, you know, your reliance or preference for evidence. Based, uh, on an appraisal, but you have to realize something, you know. I do own millions and millions of square feet of buildings all over the place. And, you know, I know what I paid for the building. I know what I would pay for a similar building, just based on the amount of, the, the potential. The cost of the repositioning for a new tenant. So, you know, I always consider myself, even though I'm not an appraiser. You know, if I'm putting the, you know, for the appraisal, if I put a, a pen in the appraisal, a check doesn't pop out. If I write a check, you know, you know, you sort of, that sort of relates, in my opinion, to what the market is. If it's a marketed property and, you know, whatever the appraiser says, you know, it, it doesn't really matter. But I understand the board's position in wanting that evidence. But, you know, I can tell you, based on a developer that's done this my whole life, third generation. You know, I, I have a pretty good sense for what something would sell for, for some, you know, what we would pay for it. For, you know, based on a non-user. So I don't think, you know, I, you know, I pull those numbers and they are half the town's numbers. But it's not like you have someone just pulling stuff that's never bought a building. I mean, I trade buildings, you know, as, for a living. So I do want to, I just wanted to, uh, make that statement for you.
I understand, I just, again, as, as the board, we have to. Work, you know, uh, with you and the assessor's office on, on coming up with something. And, and we do need, you know. Independent, you know, help sometimes.
Understood.
So.
I get it.
So do I hear a motion on? Do I hear a motion on two thousand twenty dash one twenty ninety eight South Turnpike Road?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on hearing number two thousand twenty dash one twenty ninety eight South, South Turnpike Road, no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now hear hearing two thousand twenty dash one one nine. Ninety four ninety six South Turnpike Road. Mr. Donato has placed the market value of three hundred sixty thousand dollars. On the property, the town has. Placed the value of. Six hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, and actually this building. Has gone up, so this building is. This building is similar, well, in size, is it?
It's, to me, it's the same building as the other one. Same size, same.
Correct, it's what, this is the one that's, they, they are back to back, is that? Is that how that goes there?
No, this is twelve thousand, six hundred squ- it's a, it's a freestanding building. It's twelve thousand, six hundred square feet and two acres. The other building is the same, twelve, six, fourteen.
Correct. These are, these are the two that are on the north end of the property, right?
Correct.
So six seventeen. So maybe, um, I can ask you, Mr. Jackson. The value of this, this property, uh, has increased.
Can you move the documentation now, Mr. Chairman? I'm gonna ask, with your permission, if our chief appraiser can chime in as well.
Mr. Coons, could you, uh, fill us in, the appraisal on this? The assessed value went from four twenty to four thirty two, six hundred?
Kevin, can you unmute your microphone? There you go.
Maybe, okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Hey, I did, uh, I wrote a few brief memos on each one of these and I, again.
Let me, you're right, let me go over to the. That pile. Ninety eight, alright.
Kevin, do you have any comments before I make my final comment?
No, I, in my memo to you Shelby, I just, I recommended that there not be a change on this property as well. There wasn't really much submitted for us to compare or to sort of. Pick through why it went up or down, or, so.
Okay, well, thank you for that, I appreciate that. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, for your benefits, sir, and for the benefit of the board. I, I, I do, I'm comparing these two properties. Mr. Donato is correct. Same.
Correct, I, I have, I have it too.
Just double check myself. Seems to be new by one year, I'm trying to find the difference. Disintroduce me one more minute, Mr. Chairman. So I would ask Mr. Donato to describe for us the difference in vacancy rates between the two properties. That may account for some value. After that, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
The difference, well, this building is, um, the one I, I mentioned earlier, it's partially leased. Uh, on a month to month basis. To Cerebral Palsy of Westchester, however, the. The, the rent, you know, they're not paying, you know, whatever we used to get in rent, we don't get. And they don't have a lease anymore, they're just staying monthly to hopefully, one day, be able to. Perform their services and pro- provide their services to the community. But right now, uh, you know, someone's in there, it's warm, they're keeping the lights on, but the payment is diminished. It's, it's not, you know. But yes, this building has a tenant, but there's, you know, nothing in there that would increase, that should increase the value. That, that's a little bit of a surprise, notwithstanding it's a twelve thousand dollar increase. But I, I'm not, you know, sure why it went up.
So, thank you, thank you, Mr.. So, Mr. Chairman, the reason.
So these two, these two buildings are, um, pardon?
The, the reason for the difference, because the buildings are essentially very similar. Difference is because we factored in the rent, difference in the rents. So based upon, you know, the appellant's testimony, I think maybe a s- small adjustment on this one might be warranted. Uh, I, you know, I would certainly be able to support that. So we're at, um. Let's make sure we all agree on the numbers.
Okay, so we're, we're, so it's ninety eight and one hundred, so we're dealing with ninety eight Turnpike Road. And, uh.
I believe you're dealing with ninety four to ninety six.
We, we just voted on ninety eight. That was at five sixty one eight hundred, market values.
Hold on, hold on.
Ninety six South Turnpike, which the town has a market value of six seventeen. I would, um, encourage the board to consider something just under six hundred.
Alright, there it is, okay.
The difference being that one is, you know, has, you know, is still deriving income. Support, you know, value in that range. And perhaps, you know, we should ask Mr. Donato a little bit more about the rents, the expenses for the property. You know, if the board wants to know a little bit more about. How we should consider this property.
Well, attached to this is the income valuation.
Yes.
When is the income, um, for, is it for the prior year or do you have one for two thousand twenty? Because the lease expired in September of two thousand twenty.
It's probably for two thousand and nineteen, is the most recent.
Oh, well nineteen, yeah, nineteen would, you know, it was different. But as far as the lease expiration was September twenty twenty, and that's when they started paying month to month rent. So nineteen, they were paying, uh, a much, you know, much higher rental for the space.
So, so, um, you know, nineteen, we're showing this property was probably worth over a million dollars, based upon actual income. But our, our value is much less than that, obviously, because we're factoring in market expenses, market vacancy rates. We're using a thirty percent vacancy rate for office buildings across the board. That's what we're using for this property. You know, having said that, we're at. I'll reiterate what I said, literally. At six hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars, Mr. Chairman. Based upon the appellant's testimony, I would recommend something between five seventy five, five ninety. In that range, I leave it to the board to deliberate further.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. To reduce the assessed value to five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, you said assessed, I think you mean appraised, right?
Market value.
Appraised value.
Okay.
Appraised value, I'm sorry. Appraised value.
Yeah, the market value. Go ahead, Carl, re- restate it.
I make a motion to reduce the market value, appraised value to five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one. Where are we, on, uh, two thousand twenty one nineteen? Is that correct?
I don't think I have another one with, with you on this, do I?
Two thousand twenty dash one one seven, Mr. Chairman.
One one seven? How about one nineteen, we got one? Hold on.
We just did one nineteen, sir.
That was one nineteen.
Okay, so we're doing one seventeen. One too many computer screens going here, so, alright. So this is two thousand twenty dash one one seven. Which is. South Turnpike Road, PID number one thirty nine, five seventy one, this is the land?
Chairman, I'll quickly give you an overview. This is a parcel of vacant land, directly adjacent to, um, Sarafino's Restaurant. And directly adjacent to the appellant's other property, which is a mixed use, uh, office and apartment. It's vacant land, there is an issue with the sewer line having to be brought in, depending upon. Of the property. Uh, most recently, uh, last, in this year, this was an appeal that was resolved and settled. At around, I think, a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. Currently at. Two hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars. I would be, you know, I would be comfortable with saying to the board and to Mr. Donato. to stay with what we did last year, let's call it $190,000, a parcel of land which comprises 1.64 acres, according to my records.
So you want to reduce it from 203,200 to $190,000?
I, I think that's a fair amount, to give some relief on this, because we did settle this last year, and Mr. DiNardo can obviously, you know, you know, offer his opinion and his recollection of settlement and, you know, and give the board the benefit of his opinion as well.
Okay, thank you for that. What I wanted to indicate is, is this parcel is connected to the adjacent parcel, 76 to 90 South Turnpike. And what's, so, so the prior assessed value on the land was much less before it was split. And I get, you know, land values can change a little bit, but before the land was split, it was a completely different, you know, the numbers were substantially different. They've since, you know, the, the total parcel of three acres was at $357,000 for 2017, 1819. And, you know, so we split part of it off, the part of it that was split off is substantially wetlands and also requires a major sewer upgrade, which Mr. Jackson is aware of. I believe the upgrade is in excess of $100,000. So while it's, it was a nice thing for me to split it, if you take the two parcels together, I've increased my tax liability substantially by making the split, because one, the adjacent parcel increased in value, and then, you know, this one jumped up, and effectively, it's not really a buildable piece without a sewer, you know, it's a major cost to do that, and so the market right now doesn't dictate a, you know, we wouldn't put the sewer improvement in, that's why I put a lower value on it, because I just see it as surplus land, you know, highly encumbered by wetlands, you know, so that's my position with respect to that parcel.
So if I can add to that, Mr. Chairman, everything that Mr. DiNardo said is significantly accurate. The difference in opinion we have is that the sewer, you know, to find that additional sewer at a significant cost is absolutely correct, if he were to build another development like he has in his book. And I can't remember off the top of my head, but I'm gonna say it's mixed-use property with office on the first floor and 12 or 13 apartment units above. Mr. DiNardo will correct me, and I would appreciate it.
Mr. Jackson, you're fading in and out, I can't, I can only hear every other word, so I'm hoping.
I'm sorry, so, so, so this, so the, you know, the, the cost of the sewer is only in the event that you build another apartment building, similar to what you have next door. Did you hear me on that, sir?
I did, yes, I thought it's related to development, but you're saying specifically apartments, okay?
Right, so there are, you know, and, and how many units do you have, is it 12 or 15, I, I can't remember?
12.
So you have a 12-unit apartment complex with retail on the, retail office on the first floor?
Office, correct.
So there's what, 13 or 14 units, you tell me?
Well, 12 residential units and one commercial unit.
So 13 units, so if you were to build a 13-unit complex on this property, you would need to install that, that sewer line. However, if you were to build another restaurant, like you have next door, or just a single office building, or some other use, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not definite that you would have to install that additional sewer line. The sewer line is dependent upon number of units, the occupancy rate of what you, what you would propose to build. And what you, you know, that sewer line improvement requirement is based upon another 13-unit building. So, you know, and, you know, I think the board needs to take that into perspective and understand that, you know, you know, if you're gonna build 13 units, then the sewer line becomes feasible, because you're spreading the cost over 13 units. If you're just building one or two units, then you may not need to even do that. And we haven't really, we haven't really solved that, that question, I don't think, I don't think.
Well, I, I think other people in the town would disagree with your interpretation, and, you know, we were under the impression, and informed by various people, that, you know, any development's going to require an increase in that line, not trigger, you know, not 12 units or two units, but development of that parcel, and I believe part of the zoning conditions, when the 12, the, you know, the 13-unit building, adjacent building was approved, was they were approving it, and the sewer could be used for that, but future development would require the upgrade. And my last recollection of the upgrades, about $150,000. If I'm wrong, you know, if you have information that leads to otherwise, that's, well, great. If you're telling me the town would approve a development without a sewer upgrade, well, that's news to me. And so, you know, I say that under oath, I mean, you know, my impression is I have to spend at least $150,000, 125 to 150 to even use this parcel, and that's, you know, what I'm going on.
So, so let me back up then. Based upon your knowledge, what was submitted to the town when you got that ruling for the additional sewer line? Was it, was it an identical building to what you built next door?
It's not, so, I don't, we never submitted anything to the town, but when we reviewed the file, and keep in mind, this building was taken over by us, you know, by the bank, and it took us three years to get a CO between wetlands and people in different departments, we, we received, you know, a mixture of opinions and positions over time on it, but we think, you know, we think we completed it, but, you know, I, I never submitted anything. But I was, when I was reviewing the file, I saw, and it was discussions with, I believe, Casey, you know, in the sewer department, they said development, future development would require a, a major upgrade. And whatever numbers I saw would have been from 10 years ago and the prior owner. It's just, that, that has been reiterated to me, but I haven't had a, a vote or a commission tell me this. I rely on what engineers that work for me tell me, and what I've seen, you know, coming back from the town, you know, that's, that's what I have on it, so we haven't tried to do anything. But I do believe when we severed it, you know, the, the feedback from my engineers to me when it was subdivided was that, if you want to use this land, you have to upgrade the sewer. So that's what I've heard from my people, and that's what I rely on.
So you don't know.
Mr. Jackson, what is the value of the property? What is the value of the property with $150,000 sewer upgrade? I mean, so you're looking at 300, you know, with, with, with everything, is that 350? Or an open, an open piece of property on South Turnpike Road? I mean, I don't think there's many open pieces like that, right, in, in, in that location.
Well, we, we value it, you know, I, I don't think that current town's value is reflected, you know, doesn't reflect the sewer upgrade, and keep in mind, while the property is over an acre, it's a, it's just under, I think it's 1.6 acres, the substantial portion is wetland. So it's, you know, you have to go by what you can actually use versus, you know, the size. I can have 50 acres, but 45 are wetlands, so then I'm only figuring the value for the 45 acres. I attribute very little to wetland, because it just, it's a liability for taxes, and you can't really use it. So the number I put on this property is, you know, based on my position, if I put the sewer line in, sure, it's gonna be worth more money, I don't disagree, but without the sewer line, I basically see it as, you know, a parcel, you know, and I, not with a negative value, I put down 50 grand, I think. But, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's not usable in its current form, from, and that's what I was told. And that's the feedback that's been given to me by the, through my engineers from the engineering department. Now, that's, that's all I know about it.
Okay, again, you know, there's a lot here that we don't know, a lot of numbers, a lot of discussion, a lot of engineering, a lot of, a lot of different things. So do I hear a recommendation from the board to see if we can, you know, give some relief to, to the current market value we placed on it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to reduce the market value to $180,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think that is all of them, Mr. DiNardo, except for the ones we didn't.
I believe so, and thank you for your time. I do have one question, and it may be directed for and better addressed by Mr. Jackson, but as I look at these, you know, online, you know, and I relate back to 102 to 104 South Turnpike, which you've already taken action on, I noticed the land value is the same size two-acre parcel, but it's double that of the adjacent parcels. I also noticed the square footage the town is using is 30,800 square feet, when we always thought the building's about 24 or 25. We do have some measurements on it, but I guess my question is, that would be a big swing in value. I'm not saying you, you could make a decision on it now, although you can't see that the land is double, you know, 200,000 an acre versus 110 for adjacent, but the square footage is something else that, you know, I, I thought had been addressed, and I don't know how, what do I do to address that? I mean, because it's 20% swing. So that's, you know, this is a question I have.
I'll answer that, Mr. Chairman, so the board has taken its actions, and that is effective for the 2020 grant list. I would encourage Mr. DiNardo to contact our office, pick up these issues, you know, looking forward.
Okay, fair, thank you very much, thank you for everyone's time and attention to these matters.
Thank you.
Have a good night, take care.
You too, so we're gonna move on to, I think Mr. Magutter was next here, so we're gonna do appeal number, or hearing number 2020-003, Robert Magutter. I'm going to swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my belief. Okay, and this is 327 North Elm Street, you've placed the market value of 297 on the, on the property. The town has placed a value of $334,600 on the property. And that's an increase from your last rebound, so please go ahead and tell us about your house and your appeal.
Sure, I did provide some information, I'm, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Everyone has it. The two issues I had with the appraisal, one being that I could not find a home of my size or anywhere in the, in the town of Wallingford that sold for that price in the last two years. Um, I did, but I did provide some comps, and also, my home is valued significantly more than my neighbor's similar-sized homes. So those are my two biggest issues. And then I guess the third issue is, I purchased a home in 2014, and at this point now, with the last evaluation, which I also had to talk to you folks about, saying the value of my home has increased over $60,000 in the last five years, which I'm just looking for somebody to verify or support that for me. When I did speak to Vision Government, the assessment company, the first time, these, the gentleman I spoke to agreed with me, so I was a little surprised to find that there was no adjustments made.
Um, so let me hold on, let me just keep looking through the documents here. So currently, the we have the town assessor's office has reviewed the market value of 334,600, which is an assessed value of 234,200. So the notes are, the subject property was purchased for 272,500, July of 2014. The current owner has done over $40,000 worth of improvements to the property. The detached garage shed is prefab without a permanent foundation, like, yes, I, okay? So they adjust the overall condition of the home and change the quality grade of the detached garage, resulting in a new market value of 316,900. So that's, that's what the assessor's office has done, then has recommended prior to the appeal.
I, I'd never seen anything with 368 on it.
It just, yeah, th- this is what they're recommending, and this is based upon all your information, and it was just done this week and submitted to the board, that's their recommendation.
Sure, so, so a 1,200-square-foot ranch is worth $368,000, when my, my neighbor's, 316.
316.
Oh, 316, okay, my apologies, I'm, 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 again, I still, I, I still think that's too high. As you can see, my next-door neighbor's home, who is almost 1,900 square feet, is assessed at 277?
I don't understand. Were they assessed at 277?
No, I'm sorry, the ma, the market value was 277.
All right. Mr. Jackson, or, or Mr. Coons, do we have any allotment or, or allocation for the wetlands behind the house here? Is, is that been adjusted for on this property? You know?
Unmute your microphone, Kevin.
Are we allowing for that? Kevin, is, is, are we allowing for any wetlands in the, in the back of the property?
My apologies, I was trying to look for the field card.
I, I thought you, we're still muted, so.
Okay. This, 374, right, 3?
327.
327? I'm just trying to find the documents here. Or the field card.
Yeah, I
I'm trying to use a Mac, which I'm not familiar with, so this is difficult. I'm trying to use a Mac, which I'm not familiar with, so this is difficult. Uh, let's see here.
I'm not, I, I don't remember which, what coding it is for, uh. For that allowance.
So it'd be, if, any land adjustments would be at the bottom of the field card on the left-hand side. There's a few landlines. Um, actually, if you go towards the middle, on the bottom of the field card, any, under the condition, there may be adjustment.
Location adjustment?
Yes, or condition adjustment, possibly.
Condition. Alright, one.
If conditioned at a hundred percent or, or one, that means there's no adjustment for any kind of topography, wetlands, et cetera.
Okay, well, so what, what? In regard to that, cause it, because it is, it is wet back there. I, I know, you know, there have been other. Houses that have come, uh, from there, and there's some. Wetland issues in the back there.
Okay, generally what we would do is maybe ask for if there's any type of a wetlands map that, that we're aware of. You know, what, that department.
So.
There's a stream that runs through the back of my yard.
Correct. Um, so if, if the condition was something other than one. Alright, one means there is no condition issue, is that what?
Correct, that there's been ma- no adjustment for it.
Okay, so what kind of adjustment would, would happen for stream wetland like that?
Maybe depending on the, uh, maybe five to ten percent.
Okay. Okay, I, I think, uh, you know, we, you know, the assessor's office has dropped it, and, uh, I think because what you stated in here about the, uh, the wetlands. We'll take a, we'll take a little, a little, uh, better look at it.
And I guess my biggest thing is I'm just trying to understand how my property at this point is worth, you know, uh, you know, twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars more than my neighbors' who homes, whose homes are of equal, you know, if not larger than mine with square footage, so.
Well, um, again, between the reval and going in, I don't have, you know, all the information on your neighbors, uh, and I don't, you know, I don't know what the condition of theirs is, I don't. I have numbers for theirs, uh. What, which house in particular are you talking about?
My next door neighbor's three twenty-five North Elm, uh, then also three nineteen as well. They're, they're both right next to me, and they're both in value substantially less than mine. That's why I was just looking to keep my assessment where it was, and. I was looking for it.
Did theirs stay, did theirs stay where it was?
I'm sorry?
Did their assessment stay where it was?
Uh, actually, my next door neighbors went down.
The brick house?
The three twenty-five, correct. Um, and then, uh, three nineteen, which, as you can see from the photos, is a very nice home.
Yep, correct. I know the house, and I know the house next door to that. They did a lot of work in there.
Yeah, um, that home, uh, there, hers actually went up by, it looks like three thousand dollars. Um. And they do have, granted, they have a little bit less property than I do.
So yours, right, yours is the town's three sixteen. Two twenty-one. So. Okay, I think, um, uh. You know, I think, uh, we'll probably be able to allow you a little bit more. I mean, we're, we're at the three sixteen. Um, nine, I think it is. Do I hear anything from a board member?
I make a motion to reduce the market value to three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can I just ask one more question? Um, I was concerned with the original evaluation. Um, I, I don't understand, I, now, this is twice I've been in front of the board. My last two evaluations where it was significantly higher than. It, it's, it has something to do with, um, some kind of algorithm or something that my home is stuck in? Um, I just hate to waste everybody's time to have to do this every five years.
Mr. Chairman, by May.
Okay.
So this is Shelby, the assessor. Uh, sir, I would encourage you to speak directly with our office if you have.
Okay.
Have you? Did you?
Uh, no, I have not spoken directly with the assessor's office, no.
So, you know, I would encourage you to do that. That's the first step. Because, you know, we're a very, you know, resident-friendly office, and we're willing to sit down and go over things. Many times, there's a property that has unique features that the assessor is, I'm, I'm gonna try to speak closer, because sometimes I go in and out. Many times, there are properties that have unique features that, you know, the property owner knows much more about it than the assessor office would. And when you sit down with us and call us and talk to us, you know, we can have a much more productive conversation and get to the heart of the matter. So I would encourage you in the future, you know, if you have any question. First step is call the assessor's office. Speak with, and, and you know, if you speak with a staff member.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Ask for the assessor. That's the way to do it, because, you know, we want, we wanna, we wanna get it right, believe me. Believe me when I tell you, we wanna get it right, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna have to.
I'm sure you do.
Put, put you, to this, coming to a board and everything else, if there's something that we can figure out on our own.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty, have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen, you as well.
Thank you. So I, I think, um, Aaron and Mac, uh, Vasey, uh, were next, so we'll, we'll take them.
Hi, how are you?
Good, um, case.
So, uh, I do wanna, uh.
Find your paperwork, and then I'm gonna swear you in, and then we can, we can start, so. Hold on, let me just. Is this four Penn Drive?
Yes, it is.
Okay, alright. Okay, so this is hearing number twenty twenty dash oh twenty. Matthew and Aaron Vasey, four Penn Drive, I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Can you?
Okay, you've placed a market value on the property of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars based on a recent appraisal. Also, the fireplace doesn't have a chimney, and it's unusable. House also has original nineteen fifty-seven window. Um, and is in fair condition, okay. So go ahead, you can, uh, tell us, tell us some more about your house.
Sure. So, uh, we purchased a house in December of twenty nineteen, so we've been here just about a, a year now. And this is our first time going through, uh, an appraisal process, so. I just wanna mention that because when I, I'm a person of questions, so don't be offended if I ask, because I just may not understand the process. Um, so a couple of things that we are, uh, wanting to take a look at is, as I said, in, on the property card, there is a fireplace, but it is not functional. There is no chimney exiting the roof of the house. Also, the U E P unfurnished porch, uh, which is rated at forty-eight point eight unit cost. That is actually a very small, um, concrete pad that was, used to be the original concrete pad of the carport. There, uh, really is nothing fancy to it, and I am questioning, uh, why it would not be rated the same as the front porch step, which is a unit cost of nineteen point five-two. Also, there is, uh, a half bath that was in the basement when we purchased the home. But the home was in, uh, pretty poor condition, and based on the, uh, inspection that we had of the home, they suggested to not use it. It was unusable, um, so that has been removed. Uh, we took that out, so I wanted to mention that as well. You have our kitchen rated as in average condition. Uh, however, we believe it should be below average due to the condition of the cabinets and the small amount of the cabinets, and just, um, their original nineteen fifty-eight cabinets with zero upgrades since the original, um, building of the house. So there, it's, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, the walls are pretty much stripped from wallpaper, somehow the, um, the joisting and everything on the side is kinda poking through.
Um, yeah, so also there's, uh, significant water damage on the wall that is between the dining room and the kitchen due to neglect of the previous owner. Um, there is a bad roof leak, and, um, so we're dealing with that right now. It's, uh, it's, it's really not in good shape at all. Everything's rusted. It has to be evaded. Um, mostly, we're gonna be doing a mold test to see what's going on in there. Uh, another thing is the main bathroom, which is rated as average. Uh, we had found significant floor rot underneath the toilet and the tub, and also wall rot due to a window that was within the shower stall. So I am, uh, asking to have it be put as below average for the rating. Uh, that, that bathroom is gonna need to be gutted and completely redone. And we're pretty much, there's a portion of the floor that we're falling through the floor, so it's unusable at the moment. We've had to shut off the plumbing until we have money to make some adjustments and upgrades. And also, I would like to mention, from the last assessment in twenty fifteen to, to now, or to the new one, twenty twenty, the previous owner, Raymond Hurlbert, he was, uh, an elderly gentleman in, in his nineties, and he was actually in arrears of his taxes around thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, just because he didn't have the money to pay them. And so that is also reflected in him not being able to put money into improvements in, uh, like the regular upkeep of the house. So there, um, I don't see how a justification of an increase in, uh, this much of a market value of the house could have taken place in the past five years, when there has been literally no improvements at all. It's only just been degrading. I also would like to mention that I had sent in some property cards of recent, uh, houses in our area, one of them being ninety-one Pond Hill Road, just right around the corner from us. It's actually one of the properties that was mentioned in the appraisal that was submitted as a comparable house to ours. Uh, this house, the assessed value from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty was a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred, and it increased to a hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred, which is only an increase of three thousand one hundred dollars, whereas ours had increased, uh, almost thirty thousand dollars. And their assessment value, uh, increased only one point nine percent, and ours increased seven point nine percent. And then another case of eighteen Reskin Drive, which is another house that's point nine miles from ours. It's the next street over. Uh, that had a pretty comparable, um, appraisal value of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and an assessment of one sixty-four-five. And their assessment actually went down a few thousand dollars and decreased in percentage two point nine percent. So I don't see how these comparable houses and properties in our area are, are minimally increasing, and this, and one is decreasing, but ours is significantly increasing, when there had been no improvements to the house at all. And half the time, it was in, um, in an ownership of an estate, because the gentleman had passed away. So I'm just asking to relook at the assessed value of the home, and just don't feel like it is being fairly, uh, valued.
Okay. What, uh, what grade do we have on, um?
Uh, you have it at the C plus currently.
Alright, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Coons, so we ask Mr. Coons.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I put, I don't have that field card in front of me at this point. It sounds like a C plus. She's probably correct. I do have, I don't know, um, from Ian that was written, and he has a recommendation of, um, he reviewed everything that was submitted with the appeal. And he, his suggestion is to change the condition of the, the overall condition from, I believe, what's in average condition. Now it's a fair condition. And that would change.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find that, so.
Okay.
This file is, is kind of long, and things are placed all over, so, um. Okay, let me, uh, okay, now I got to that. Okay, go ahead.
Um, Ian's recommending that we change the, the, the overall condition from average to fair.
Okay.
Based on everything they submitted and their testimony tonight. So his recommendation would be to change it to two forty-seven, eight hundred, and that's, um, that's fair market value.
And that's, that's from, uh, him changing the, uh, condition?
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Have we, uh, looked at this, uh, directly?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Have we been out there to the house? Or just, just, uh, build review fi- eight fifteen twenty, right? That means, uh, Vision, Vision did a field review on it?
Um, I'm gonna try to pull it up here.
Exterior on, uh, ten twenty one nineteen, measure the exterior. And I see the review on eight fifteen twenty.
But what date did you buy this house?
Uh, December seventh, twenty nineteen.
Okay, eight fifteen twenty twenty field review. Okay, so a couple of things here. You, you the grand list is based upon the value of the house on October first, twenty twenty. That, that's the, uh, point in time that we're, uh, determining the value of the house. Okay, so when you see these, you know, increases, um, you know, the real estate market in that timeframe last year was, was pretty good. It still is pretty good. Uh, and numbers are going up, so to have an increase, um, is, is really, it is market driven. Um, it's not driven by the town. It is driven by, uh, what's happening in, in the market, so. Um, values back in twenty nineteen are gonna be different than values today. Values back in twenty fifteen, you know, when that revow was done are, are gonna be different than today. Um, so buying the house in December of twenty nineteen, uh, was a good thing because you, you bought before the buying, you know, frenzy of twenty twenty. Sounds like a lot, you know, a lot of things are need to be repaired in the house, fixed up in the house. Um, you know, we are reducing, uh, based upon review by assessor's office by Ian and one of the current market value of two fifty eight seven to two forty seven eight. Um. You know, I think the board, you know, you've, you've done a good job explaining. There's a lot of information that you've, you've put here. Um, you've done a lot of work to, um, provide the board with, uh, updates, values, uh, what have you. Um, so I think the assessor's office worked on some of it and I think, uh, um, I think the board might have some recommendations also.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I recommend, uh, we reduce the market value to two hundred and forty five thousand dollars.
Second. Fifty eight seven. Okay, second by Mr. Avery. Uh, I, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I appreciate that decrease, however, um, that is still around without doing the math. It looks like a five percent increase. And if you're saying that the grand list is based off, is market driven, then it should be a comparable increase compared to what our neighbors' home values are worth. So if our neighbors are only go- going up one point nine percent, um, two percent, ours is still raising by four or five percent.
Well, maybe, maybe in the last, in the last revow, theirs wasn't at the right place. So bringing them up one and a half percent brings them into the right, right place. So.
But, but the new value is the twenty twenty value. So maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying is that if they're being put up to the right place and it's only going up two percent, ours should be put to the correct place as well. And with no money being put into the house for improvements,
Well, that market value of the house is what brings the house up. In, in today's real estate market, a lot of houses are selling without necessarily, you know, a lot of improvements. It should, the, the demand for the product, demand for the inventory is so high right now. And, and again, back in twenty twenty, October first was, was significant, you know, uh, shortage of houses and therefore the demand is very high, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, do you have anything to say? Are you good with the, you agree with this?
Not really. No, that's the decision.
So if the appraisal that we submitted was for two hundred and thirty-
The board has made the decision and, and you'll be getting notification from the board, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, can I still have one more question?
I will add one more question, sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So the appraisal that I submitted was for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
And when was that, when was that done?
It was done at the time of purchase of the home and it was a time that the appraisal was done at the home.
Okay, so.
Say again?
Markets, December of twenty nineteen, when you purchased the home, or prior to that, house values were significantly different than October first of twenty twenty.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
So. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Correct. Okay, so I, um, uh, I don't know who was next, so caller nine, caller twelve and, uh, uh, Jared, uh, Liu. Um, I don't know. Um, Jared Liu, why don't we, why don't we go with you and then caller nine and then caller twelve?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Good evening. So let me back up and find your appeal. Okay, I'm gonna swear you in. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my, uh, knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Okay. So this is hearing number twenty twenty dash oh oh one, Jared and Kristen Liu, fifty nine Curtis Avenue. You placed the market value of one fifty nine, two hundred on the property in the town. Has placed the value of three eighteen one hundred, three hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred. So, um, please go ahead and tell the board about your house.
Yeah, do you have the ability to let me share the screen so I can show you some pictures?
Um.
It says to share screen, ask the organizer to make you presenter.
I am not the organizer.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, we asked that anything that would be submitted to the board be submitted in advance so that we could share with the public one day in advance of this meeting.
And, and we do have pictures that were.
Would you, would you mind actually just showing me the pictures you have? Because I looked at the file online and they're basically just, I mean, black blobs, so I, I, I'm worried that you can't actually see those.
So, so just give me a minute, sir, and let me think about this. I want to make sure that I'm following the proper protocol for freedom of information and other, other requirements. I want to make sure that if you have the opportunity, then we also protect the public as well. So please, if you just give me one moment to contemplate, would that be okay?
Sure, and I'm only asking to be able to show you what was submitted.
Okay, well, well then you should certainly be able to do that. Just give me one moment. Thank you. Yes, I have a series of exhibits that were submitted. Um, this is you and you'll have to forgive me because I'm trying to learn technology as best I can under sometimes difficult circumstances. So how do we, I can share my screen. I have an option to share your screen, is that what you're telling me? Mr. Liu, did you hear my question?
I did not. You've kind of fade in and out.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry about that. That's, that's happened in the past. So I have your exhibits and, uh, I can try to bring them up if you, if you're not able to, but you say that you are able to bring them up.
I have them on my computer, but the button says to share your screen, ask the organizer to make you presenter. So I believe I need the ability to share my screen first.
Well, I can share the screen, but I don't know that I can make you a presenter. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
His, his desktop will become visible to us, this.
Okay, let's go.
Go ahead. As long as, as long as you're the organizer, Mr. Jackson, you allow, um, allow that.
Hey.
Okay, so there you go.
Do my best.
We're, we're, we're heading into new ground here.
Happy to be there with you. Oh, he's gonna put it on to the difference. Here we go. You can see a chimney?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, so thank you. Um, so I would like to make an appeal on two grounds. Uh, first, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on, uh, you know, you obviously spend a lot of time with comps, but I think the comps are, uh, a little bit off. I, I gave you some comps from around the time when I submitted this proposal that were similar in terms of bedroom, bathroom and square footage size and were simply based on houses that had sold recently, uh, and they were considerably lower. Um, but that's where I come to the starting point of, I believe, the assessed value for a house in good condition should be two hundred and fifty five thousand two hundred. Um, as it is actually, uh, I know you, you, you're based on October first as being your assessed date. Uh, there is a house on our street that is listed currently that's a pretty identical footprint, uh, of four bedrooms, one and a half bath, almost, uh, you know, similar square footage. Uh, and you could actually go on Realtor dot com right now and look at, you know, it's got a nice granite kitchen, finished third floor, efficiency windows, nice hardwood floors throughout, full driveway, and it's listed for less than our house. Um, so I mean, I think, uh, just-
What is it, what is it listed for?
Uh, it's listed at three twenty something. So, uh, you know, like I said, I, I think the, the starting point of the assessed value is different. But where I want to focus my time here is on the condition of the property. Um, and so a lot of this, uh, we had suffered an incident in August of twenty twenty. Um, and, uh, we are looking at significant repairs. Um, when the, uh, when the assessor from Vision came out, uh, we actually did take some pictures. Uh, that was actually slightly earlier. I think, I think he came out before August. Uh, but we did take some pictures on the day when he came out and I'll, I'll tell you which ones are the pictures I said. I said this in my letter too, so you can get a sense for what did he actually see when he came out? And obviously he only saw the outside, but I'll take you through some pictures on the inside as well. So here's the first picture. Um, we have a chimney that is, uh, in pretty bad condition. Um, and, and all of the figures that I'm gonna give you, we've actually these jobs, uh, if, for most cases with multiple contractors. So the numbers that I gave you, those are, uh, the, the estimates from the contractors for the repair that has to be done. Uh, you know, so here you see a chimney that, uh, is in jeopardy of falling down. Um, and we are planning to have this work done, excuse me, uh, early this spring. We have a contractor who we have, uh, scheduled with to, um, actually rebuild this chimney. So you can't just re-point this chimney at this point. Has to be rebuilt. Uh, and they're gonna take it down, uh, below the roof line by several feet to rebuild it. Uh, here you can see, uh, condition of roof and siding in some places. Uh, and the siding has blown off in, uh, several places along the house. And so we're gonna have to replace, uh, all of the siding. This is from the incident that happened in August. Uh, and, uh, you know, hopefully that gives you a sense there. Um, the gutters are clogged and you can see they're in bad condition. You can also see, uh, a fair amount of mildew on the roof as well, you know, further giving you a sense of the condition of the roof. Uh, and the side of the house here, you can see the retaining wall on the left-hand side. Um, this actually is something that, uh, we are slated to fix in a future year. Uh, just because it, uh, it looks like it is, uh, it's not moving massively every year as we've been in the house about five years. Um, but you can see that, uh, the retaining wall is not in good shape. Uh, the moment that, that moves considerably more, obviously that becomes an emergency repair. Um, but we have had, uh, some folks look at that, um, but the retaining wall is gonna be a significant expense as well. Uh, last time I came before you, uh, which was in twenty fifteen, soon after we had moved in, um, we had a challenging situation of having bought a fixer-upper and finding that the repairs that were needed to the house were considerably more than we had estimated. Uh, some of it, I think, verged on libelous, not that we're litigious people. Um, but, um, the, a lot of the foundation on the inside had been filled with caulk. Uh, and so we discovered that only after purchasing the house and set about repairing that. Uh, so I just don't want you to think that we haven't done anything since we last came before you. Uh, repairing the foundation, uh, you know, and there, the dual walls of the foundation, there's the interior and the exterior. So we had primarily focused on the interior. We spent, uh, a lot of time and, uh, expense fixing the interior of the foundation. But here's a picture of the exterior foundation. Um, and then, uh, the last picture I have from the day that the, uh, assessor came out, here's the porch. And you can see the area over to the right. Um, the porch is actually falling apart in places. Uh, and we had, uh, that part replaced because those boards punched through. Um, they were completely rotted and there are other boards that have punched through as well, but the porch is not in the best shape. Um, so I think you can see as a starting point that, um, you know, the house showed to be in, um, you know, below average condition even on the day that it was visited. Oh, sorry, I did have one more exterior. Here's the shed. Um, the shed, uh, is almost kind of like a greenhouse on the outside. Uh, it, it has, uh, some nice, uh, floral and fauna for you. Um, it's actually taking some water in and we're gonna need to replace that sooner rather than later if we want to save the shed. Okay, so obviously the, uh, inspector couldn't see the inside when he came out, but I do want to show you. Uh, we have some challenges on the inside. This is the chimney that you saw on the outside. Uh, and you can see that it needs to be rebuilt down several feet on the inside, uh, has a number of, uh, bricks that are crumbling. But what you can also see here, and this, if, just to orient you, this is looking up. Um, you're looking up towards the peak of the roof. And so that bow, um, that is actually, uh, um, a collar tie. So all the collar ties are warped. Uh, we had, uh, some quotes come out recently of, uh, what it would cost to replace these collar ties. Um, but this is something that although, you know, not quite the same structural level of the floor joist, um, this is important. We need to get these taken care of as well. Um, you know, these are like purfling strips that are here, so like they're not two by twos like they should be. This is a view of the fence that is falling down. Actually, I talked to Amy Torrey a few weeks ago about the process that's involved with replacing a fence. This fence actually, part of it actually fell onto our neighbor's property. So this is something that is now failing, and we need to take care of immediately. But from talking with Amy, I may have underestimated the value of repairing the fence because it's not just the cost of the fence, but apparently we need to do a $2,000 site survey in preparation for that as well. So fence work will be coming. And then I wanted to show you too that the third floor, which is, well, it's an attic. I know it's not reflected here as square footage, which is good because it's not livable space. But we do have plaster walls in some places throughout the house that are not in great condition. I didn't just punch a wall, I didn't punch a hole here for you just for the effect. You know, these are things that, as you can see from those other pictures, we have things that are critical needs that we're working on repairing. And so, you know, to some extent, we are living in a condition with holes in the wall and cracks in the window, just because those are not immediate things that have to happen as we work on, you know, things like the foundation and the chimney. One of the next things that we need to get to is the returns for the plumbing. So the other thing that there, like there were two things that we've really been working on since I last came before you. The interior foundation and then the plumbing supply. So we had a lot of lead pipes and leaking pipes on the supply side for the plumbing. And so we've been working on replacing and repairing those. And then the next is we have, you can see some returns that are tremendously rusted. In some cases, they are leaking. And actually, I think in maybe the next picture, oh, you'll see, I've got another picture of return where the previous tenants had epoxy in order to keep it from leaking as much as it did. Here's a picture of interior roof. I mentioned that we had an incident in August that punched some holes in the roof. And so here's one where it came through and we've had to put an emergency repair on it. And this is something that, again, we have contractors coming out pretty soon to deal with this. Right, so here's the one that's got some epoxy on it. And you can see they just sort of plugged holes and drilled wherever. But we're going to need to work on the plumbing returns. And there's the main stack. You can see similar condition. And then, again, the incident in August, we had two very mature trees that offered nice shade in our property. And we think added considerably to the property value. And they were damaged in the storm. So this, in full disclosure, is not what the assessor saw when he came out. This is the day the trees came down. But our backyard is now sort of like a BMX racetrack. As we will need to, you know, the landscaping that I put here is not a like a nice to have. This is, the backyard is, you know, a mess of sawdust and mud. So this is something that we're going to need to regrade and reseed the entire backyard. And I think this is the last one that I have. I mentioned that, you know, there are some things that are just sort of what we're living with at the moment as we work on emergency repairs. And so here you can see, you know, we do have cracked windows. We don't have sort of nice, high-efficiency windows. We have sash windows that are odd sizes everywhere. And for anyone who's had sash windows, you know, these things break somewhat regularly, especially as the sort of, I guess you'd call it caulk. I'm not sure what they put around the edge as those things start to fail. So, you know, we have some cracked windows in the house. One of the things that I did put in the appeal as well was, we have two chimneys. And so you have in your packet also a quote from a chimney repair contractor who came out to certify for us that the chimney that's tied to the fireplace had cracks throughout it, and he did not recommend that we use that. He said it would seep carbon monoxide into the house. That has been taken care of now, and we literally just spent $6,000 to repair that chimney so that it's in usable condition. So we're working on these things. You know, we don't have unlimited funds. And I would say that's the basis of the appeal, which is, you know, we appreciate you working with us. We're certainly aware that, you know, one of us losing a job could make it so that, you know, with the amount of repairs that have to happen to the house, you know, suddenly we could be suddenly in, you know, uncomfortable situation, not able to sustain what has to happen. So we're working on it, and we have not been idle in the time that has gone by since we last came before you. And we'll just appreciate your continued patience in this. And thanks to Mr. Jackson for working out the share screen.
Okay. So back in 2017, we reviewed the property then. And I think we reduced the assessed value to 219,800. Is that correct?
I would have to take your word for it on the exact value. The letter I received, I think, said 343 was the new assessed value, but I'll defer to you on what the amount.
What you, that is correct. The new assessed value is, yes, the letter says, I think, you got that from whom? Vision at 343,200? And the town has already reduced it to 318,100, okay? And during the informal appeal process, the condition of the subject property was reduced from good to average. Right? So that's already taken place on the informal vision appeal process. Which you're probably not aware of. That's, the assessor's office did that, and that's reported in the package today.
I did speak to a gentleman named Jim, I believe was his name. I'm trying to remember. I think that was in December. I can pull up my notes. And I did make the case to him that the condition was not, not good. And I was aware that he said he was looking at downgrading the condition. But, you know, I think you can see that.
So that puts it at an assessed value of 222,700. Prior to that, the assessed value was 219,800, okay? So where you're back to, you know, prior, almost back to your $3,000 away in assessed value from where you were before the revale.
So I'm just pulling up the letters that I received. I don't remember any of them, starting with two.
Well, this is assessed, not, there's assessed and there's appraised. Appraised is the market value.
Yeah, I've been talking market value.
Correct. Well, I'm talking, I'm talking assessed value. So as the house is right now, as of March 1st, with the reduction from good to average, the market value is 318,100, right? But also, prior to that, the market value was 314. So you've only gone up $4,000 in market value, $4,100.
Are you looking for a response?
Sure.
So that's better certainly than 343. Again, like the basis of my appeal is I think it has not been understood the condition of the property. I mean, I would be happy to schedule a time if, you know, if Rhonda wanted to come out. You know, she did come out, it was, I think, in 2015. And obviously, different, you know, pandemic times then or non-pandemic. And, you know, we were able to show her some aspects of this. But like I said, we suffered a pretty major incident in August.
But you, you place a market value on it of $159,200. All right?
Yeah, so.
I mean, that, you know, you lived with it at 314 when we, when we did the, you know, in the 2015 to 2020 time range. And, and we've, we're now at 318. Yeah, that's a far cry to 159,200.
Yeah, and I, I, sorry, go ahead.
I just don't, you know, you know, I think we're staying within the guidelines and the boundaries of where we were prior, even though you have, you know, some issues, continuing issues. Because I remember this, you know, these issues in the last revale. So you know, you have the same issues, if not maybe some more. I don't, I don't know. You know, I don't remember exactly what, you know, what went on in the, when you had just bought it, right? You just bought it in that last round. When did you buy it? 2017, 2016?
2015, yeah. And so what I've tried to lay out for you is, I think the assessed value, the market value is high, right? So if you're at 318, I'm saying I think the starting point should be 255. But we have suffered new incidences, right? So when you look at the roof and the siding, that's $53,000 that we're about to pay out of pocket for an incident.
Where's your, wait a minute, that's, where's, there's insurance to cover that? That, you know, that, the house should be repaired back to what it was via the insurance company. So we can't absorb the loss, all right, of that, whether you pay for it out of pocket or not. But your insurance should be, should be covering that.
So what I'm saying, and I can talk about the insurance process in a moment. But what I'm saying is, any buyer who would come look at this house would say, there are holes in the roof. I will not pay 318. I will take off, you know, $33,000 to repair the roof. And so the condition of the property is quite below average. So in working with the insurance company, they started us with an estimate of $5,000 for the repair work because the way they're based is on, is on replacement value. And so we have paid several thousand dollars out of our own expense to hire an insurance adjuster to help us through this process. And so we do expect to get more than 5,000, but it will be a far cry from the full value.
But you have to do the repair, which, which then in essence is maintaining the house. You have to do that. I mean, all right, and then, and then the value of the house maintains. You know, you can't leave the house, you know, damaged. You don't want, you don't want that.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there are people who serve in town government who have tarps over their roofs. But yeah, that's not our intention. But my understanding of this process is that the snapshot is October 1st. And I'm telling you that on August, I think it was August 4th, we suffered this incident. And on August 1st, 2020, these are the repairs that had to happen. We had a hole, we have holes in the roof on October 1st. And so I think that is the process that I'm trying to honor is the snapshot date.
Are the holes repaired now?
They are not. We've gone the whole winter without being able to repair those.
Okay. So what is the value of the roof?
So so the, the contractor, you're saying we're about to pay $33,000 for the roof to be repaired.
And how much is your insurance going to cover?
It's an ongoing process. Like I said, we've hired an insurance adjuster to help us through this. His price was, we just paid out of pocket $3,000. So we're hoping to get more than $3,000 more out of this. And same thing with the siding, though. While you're looking at that, I'll just say, if you just wanted to look at what this incident cost us, it's the roof for 33, the siding and shutters for 20. It's the chimney two for 9,000. It's the gutters and the bulkhead for three, and it's the landscaping for 15. That was one incident.
Um. So all of these things need to be repaired on the house? Is that, is that correct? That's, those are the, those are the prevalent things that need to be repaired. That would affect, that would affect the market value. And they're going to be repaired basically by insurance money and your money. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. And that would maintain the value of the house?
So, I mean, certainly I feel better hearing you say it was 318 and not 343. But, I mean, sure, I would, I would be willing to give you that. I think that's a fair compromise. I mean, I think anyone's going to come through and say, you know, the super stack is in terrible shape and some of these other things. But yeah, I mean, I think nobody's buying the house with holes in the roof and the siding blowing off, et cetera.
Correct. Probably if you add up a lot of the, you know, all the other, you know, items, you know, because, because the house, you know, back when you came the first time had a market value of 314, we're at 318, less, you know, less what, what this repairs would be, so.
Well, we bought the house for 270?
288.
279? Oh, 288, sorry. Well, so clearly, but I, so I remembered it was, you know, two and change. It was less than what the assessed value was.
Mr. Jackson, do you have any input into where we are here?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to come close to the screen here so everyone can hear me because I know my microphone has not been working that well.
Right.
Mr. Coons might want to chime in, but no, it really comes down to, you know, and by the way, Mr. Liu, thank you very much for very, you know, comprehensive overview of your property. You really did a great job in giving us a visual of, you know, what you're facing with the storm and the damage that you faced and so forth and so on. And I think, you know, at least I want to, I want to believe that we've tried to adjust our figures to accommodate all of those factors. Now, you did, you paid 288, 2015. Real estate values have come up since then, especially last, you know, last year or so. Demand is very high for single-family homes. You are in a, by the way, very nice neighborhood next to Choate and all that. It really is a desirable neighborhood. You know, you do have some repairs that need to be made. I would tell you this. We don't adjust for a roof. Someone needs a new roof, we expect that over time that's going to be replaced. The only reason we would adjust for that is someone came in and said, you know, my roof is really bad and it's damaged. Then if we made an adjustment for that, then as soon as you put on a new roof, we would change that adjustment. And we have not done that in your case. And we have not done that in your case. I would say that, uh, you know, really, we brought our 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 initial valuation from Vision Appraisal, which, you know, don't get me wrong, we hire Vision Appraisal to assist us. But Kevin and myself and the rest of the staff in our office, it's our job to evaluate on an individual basis, property factors that may not fall into the mass appraisal process. And we've done that in your case. We've brought your value down. Where was it, I think? I don't want to repeat the numbers, but down to uh three thou- three hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred dollars. So it comes down to a question of market value. If you were going to sell that house today, we're on the market today. Would you be able to get three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for it? I think given even given the, you know, the challenges that you've expressed, I think you probably would be able to get something very close to that. Maybe more, maybe a little bit less, certainly in that range. And um you know, without having an appraisal or something else you know, to tell us otherwise. I'm I'm very confident that, you know, three hundred and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that for that home. It's a beautiful home. Beautiful home. And um I know you have some work to do on. The chairman has been over there. Chairman, I'm gonna stay. I'm I'm gonna say that, you know, and I think I think our our recommendation is to reduce it a little bit. I'll let Kevin pick up on that. We're willing to, you know, we're willing to go with the recommendation of our staff. Our staff has looked at this, you know, fairly good detail. Kevin, would you please please uh pick up?
I did have um Ian did write us a memo on this and um the by his bottom line was that he understood that during the informal process, the condition was adjusted from good to average. And so after reviewing what was submitted with this appeal, um his recommendation was not to change the assessment. Um he did a couple of um, he did sort of a, he looked at other comparable sales. Just to point out, the first two was twenty nine Palmeroy Avenue, I believe, and then forty six North Elm Street. Um those were sales. And the long and short of it, that there were some other sales that sort of indicated that this property should have a value of about two uh three twenty seven nine. So that's indicated a higher value. But Ian looked at that and, you know, we were were at this point recommending no change.
And would you mind uh talking, uh putting some descriptors on what does it mean to be average or good or fair, uh whatever other markers there are?
Typically, something that's in average, we would we will look at the age of the building, number one, and then what's been done to it. If it's been renovated, if the kitchen's been updated. Um typically speaking, if an older house, an average condition, if it's been maintained um fairly well, then it's probably average to good condition. If it's if there's a lot of deferred maintenance, then that would be something that would be in fair condition. I don't know if if you've done any work on the inside as far as the kitchen remodel or bathrooms. I didn't, I haven't really heard much about the interior, if anything's been done.
No, I mean, I'm I'm happy to take this show mobile if you want to see what the kitchen looks like and to see the bathrooms.
No, we're we're getting to a point now where we still have two other people that are that are waiting here and we're.
But I'm just saying, I think the way that he's described fair condition, like, you know, we fall fair, possibly below. I mean, we've got broken windows, holes in the walls. We've got a kitchen that's from the nineteen fifties. Uh those things have not been updated.
And I understand that Rhonda was out there last time, right? So maybe.
And and we adjusted, we adjusted the the market value to three fourteen uh that time. So, you know, three eighteen i- is really, you know, not not out of the question this time. I mean, four thousand dollars is really not out of the question, even even though you have this additional claim or or insurance issues, what have you, I, you know, uh three fourteen is is not out of the question for the value of the house increase. I think we need, I think we need to wrap it up. So I I'd like to hear if any board members have a a motion.
Mr. Chairman, uh my recommendation, motion is no change.
Second.
All in favor, I. And that no change is based on on the three three eighteen one, not not three forty three two. Just to be clear. Okay.
I I think you have disregarded your own definitions and your own process of the snapshot of October first.
Well, that may be, uh but the assessor's office has done a lot of work on the property and determined uh that number, and the board is in agreement with them, so.
Is there a next step?
There's Superior Court. You can you can file motions for, you know, hearing in court. So.
Can we request that Rhonda come back out?
The board has made its made its decision, so.
So you're saying good night?
Good night. Thank you. Caller nine, sorry for the delay. Would you please just identify yourself? Diane? Or Lisa? Diane or Lisa? Who's who's caller nine?
That would be me.
And who are you, Diane or Lisa?
Lisa.
Okay. Thank you for waiting. Sorry, sorry, we've run over. We we normally don't don't do this.
That's okay. That's okay. Some reason I'm not hearing you.
You're not hearing me?
No, I'm not hearing you. I heard everybody else, but I'm not hearing you now.
You're not hearing me now?
It all I hear you now.
Okay. All right, so this is hearing number twenty twenty one seventy. And it's
Okay.
Lisa Soap. Naked and Natural LLC.
Right.
And this is, I'm gonna swear you in, okay?
Okay.
Hang on a minute, because I lost the.
Yeah, we're having these issues tonight.
No, heck, hang on, hang on. I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
I do.
Okay, so let me get back to your appeal. You have put a market value of five hundred dollars.
Right.
On your
On my personal, on my personal assets, yes.
Personal items. And and what do we have here? We have, th- this is a new business, is that?
It is a new business. It's a new brick and mortar business, yes.
Okay, um.
I think, I I don't mean to be interrupting you here.
No.
I think what happened here is the mail, for some reason, I have not been getting my mail. I got everybody else's mail. And I think there's some lack of mail delivery here, because I had sent all this in.
Not kidding, well.
Well.
I I
Okay, I'm losing you.
No, no, I'm here. I'm just, I'm looking for some documentation, so hold on a minute, hold on. Let me jump to a different. Okay. So we have here, i- it says you did not file a twenty twenty declaration.
Actually, I did, but this is the question being where it went is anybody's choice, because I actually been going back and forth.
You have a, you you don't have a copy of of what you sent in, do you?
I do not. I've been going through all my records and I do not.
So what what is it that is on was on the list? You you value it at five hundred dollars. What?
Right, right.
What what is it that you have?
All I have in the business are folding tables, which I actually got from Goodwill, like about four uh folding tables that I got from Goodwill. And uh crock pot that I make my soap in.
Um, that's it? That's what you filed?
That's it.
Cash register, shares?
Cash register, cash register. I do have a cash register that was given to me, so I would probably value that at fifty bucks.
Because the town, the town has you at an assessed value of sixty two fifty, because they don't have a documentation. They're trying to
Right.
estimate what you're what you have. So right now your your tax liability with the town is a hundred and eighty two dollars, all right?
Okay.
You know, again, without having a list, without knowing, without seeing, you know, we're 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 estimating and that's all we have to go by. We don't have any real data. We have folding chairs, cash register, or folding tables, cash register, crock pot. Uh, you know, so.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, with paying that, I really, I just want to know.
Then then we can clean it all up, and then you can next year start over again.
Okay. Works for me. So what would I be, should I just send you a check for a hundred and eighty two dollars then?
No, you'll be getting a tax bill from the town.
Okay.
So. All right, so can I hear a motion for the board?
Okay, uh, reduce, my motion is to reduce the uh assessed value.
Um, well, there's going to be no change. Right, the current assessed value is sixty two fifty. And she and that's a that's a hundred and eighty two dollars in tax that she's agreed to pay. So.
I'm sorry, make a motion of no change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, when you get your tax bill, um that's what you'll pay. Next year, come into the office and get the get the form and make sure somebody shows you exactly what you have to do and and do it by November first. And this way, um you know, you your amount owed will be less and there'll be no penalty, okay?
Works. Thank you very much. I'm glad it's cleared up.
Thank you. And and when you when you send it back, either take it and walk walk it in and get a receipt for it, or, you know, something like that.
Okay, that would probably be the best thing I could do.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time. Sorry to keep everybody so long tonight.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine.
Um, okay.
Take care.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Diane? Diane Level?
Identify yourselves?
Yes, it's LaBelle. Yes, Diane LaBelle, Seven Chimney Hill Road, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just I just need to find your packet of information, so please hang on.
Sure.
Hold on, you're in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So this is hearing twenty twenty dash zero two five. Diane?
Yes.
Level?
Yeah.
I'm I'm gonna swear you in.
Mm hmm.
I hereby solemnly swear that the testimony I'm about to give is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge and belief.
Yes.
So this is for Seven Chimney Hill Road. You've placed the value of two fourteen nine uh on the property. And currently, the town wait a minute, let's see. You've placed the market value of two fourteen nine on the property.
Actually, I have more of a problem with the land.
Because that's
Value.
That's the exact value that the town has. So you're not you're not contesting
I'm
the market value.
So what I
Okay, go ahead.
I'm contesting the, I'm contesting the land value, the value of the land uh that they gave an appraisal of one oh nine nine. And I'm looking at the um area of where you um gave us this, that you gave the value of in right across the street from my house is municipality land. It's all owned by the airport. And the runway is like point six miles from my house, so we are right in line with with the the way the planes come in and out of the airport. And over time, the airport has expanded. And it's been very trafficky over the last couple of years. And I noticed that the National Guard's been using it uh for the maneuver training. And at nine nine thirty at night, we're hearing these massive, like helicopters. They're more like a army helicopter, and they shake the house. And they do this on a Sunday night and on sometimes during the week. They'll be flying over for quite a while they do this. And then the same thing happened uh with the the flight school. Now they have a flight school that's opened up there. And we have a lot more air traffic coming over our home. So I look at the value of this property and I say, no, nobody's going to come here and buy this house with this kind of activity going on day and night. And the flight school is uh, you know, obviously very active now, so this airport has expanded since two thousand sixteen. And they pretty much added seventy more hangars, and they've added a lot more opportunity for people to utilize this uh airport. And what I'm saying is the land property is not worth one oh nine nine here. No way. If if I was to put this house somewhere else, maybe on a dead end street or cul-de-sac, yeah, I could see the value maybe being one oh nine nine, because Wallingford is a very lucrative area to move to. But down here at the old section, I've lived here my whole life, and I was born in this house. And when I bought it off my sister back in two thousand and five, our taxes were like twenty-seven hundred dollars. And the airport was nothing like it was today. And today we have so much air traffic, it's not pleasant living here as it used to be when it was more of a country, you know, little country pumpkin area with the, you know, road over here, which was more, um, it wasn't traveled as much because we had so much traffic up at the top of the hill from all the new homes built up on Cazersky Drive and up on the top of Chimney Hill, which causes more of a cut through for Cheshire and South Meriden. So we have a lot of traffic here as well. So the, I'm more contesting and appealing the property, um, valuation of the, um, the land.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Jackson, is there been any allowance, um, for that in, in the? For the airport?
Thank you, Mr. Thank, thank you, Chairman, and the property's raised at two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. There are sales all, all around that area. At, about that, that, that sales price. I'm gonna ask Mr. Coles to chime in because he has more of a documentation than I have to work with. But I mean, you know, you know, and I live not too far from that airport myself. And I, you know, and I know, I wake up on Saturday and Sunday mornings and I hear the planes come and go. It's, 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 to me, it's not a major interference. And, and, and that's what we're seeing in the market. The market reflects that. It's not, you know, it's not something that people really, you know, discount their homes for a significant amount. Again, we work on sales. We work on sales of comparable properties. And, and I gotta tell you, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, you know, it's, it's a cape hunk. One square feet. It's a very nice thing. So that I would, I would, you know. Without any documentation, contrary, appraisal, or something to show that we've missed the mark, you know, I would have to say, our, our figures are, our figures are pretty much right on the market. Land value.
But what I'm.
The woman spoke about the land value and that's, you know, she has a valid point there. So, yeah.
I don't know if you want to come here and live for a while and then see what it's like when you're laying in bed at eight thirty in the morning and you got Blackhawks driving, flying over your house. And I have recorded them because I thought I was gonna come to you guys in person. And I was gonna let you listen to what I have to listen to. And I, I love Wallingford. I don't mind living here. And I think that, that there's beautiful parts of Wallingford, but I'm moving across the street from an airport. And Wallingford sold a good portion of land back in two thousand and sixteen to Meriden Airport so that they can extend a seventy-five foot runway that kind of comes almost close to my property. So when they fly, they fly directly over my house to land in that airport. And we have business jets. We have commercial jets now that come over here. They're not just small little prop planes that are flying, you know, around on a joyous Sunday afternoon. These are commercial planes that are coming here for Cho, uh, for maybe schools up in, um, Cheshire, you know, with well-to-do parents that drive and fly their kid back and forth to, uh, school over here. So it's become, I don't know if the assessor took that into, uh, his, um, appraisal because one oh nine nine for land is appraised from here all the way up and around the corner from where I live. And nobody's land in front of this airport is worth one oh nine nine.
Well, can I, can I get in there just a little bit? Because I live right ne- I, I live right near you. I mean, I'm on the other side of.
When you say you live, do you live on Chimney Hill, at the bottom of Chimney Hill? Is that where you live?
No, I live, I live on, off of Hill, Hill Avenue, the other side of the elementary school. And I have the, you know, the planes that come over our house. And when they take off, you know, it's really loud when they take off, but when you come into land, you can barely hear them. But that's not the point. The point is that, you know, we all live in that area and, you know, you know, our own cell, so value that reflects the fact that we live. Um, you know, I, I understand your concern. I, I really do because I lived there. I live not too far from you. I'm less than a mile away, maybe half a mile away, maybe even less than that.
But that's not directly across the street. That's not directly.
Property is valued at two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So irrespective of the land value, I would ask you, if you were gonna sell your house tomorrow, sell it for less than two hundred and twenty-five.
What, what do you?
If you say yes, I, I would have to disagree and say that I think.
You know, you, you put a market value of two fourteen nine on the property, which is the same market value the town puts on the property.
Actually, I want, I actually, I put what you put there because I thought that's what you were asking for. But I was.
So what, what do you, what do you think the property is worth?
One ninety-eight to two ten. This, the houses on both sides of me, which the problem with Visions when they were here, they, none of the houses were able to, uh, be used as a, um, uh, a market value because nobody really sold their house that was currently in these type of homes. The two houses that sold on both sides of me sold back in two thousand, I want to say fourteen, one of them, and another one sold in two thousand seventeen. And they were both renovated. The, both houses are now renovated. So our house is still the addition, the, it's the same, uh, kitchen and bathroom that was originated with the house back in nineteen forty-nine. We had no upgrades. Still same cabinets. We did update, uh, we did have to put a new floor in because the other floor was, um, definitely, uh, worn. But the, the fact is, I'm not really more, I'm more concerned about the property value than anything because of being right near the airport. And like I said, my house is point six miles, point six miles from the runway. So we get the planes coming pretty close to our roof to land. So they're louder than maybe over to where, um, the other gentleman lives because he's not as close to the airport. So they come down and land just about above the wires. And you could come and watch it to, to see it. It's, and not, someday I pray that they don't land on my house. That'll be in another situation.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, I think the board has, um, uh, I, I, I think understood saying and, uh, I feel we probably have a motion, uh, in regards to this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reduce the market value to two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, bye.
Okay, um, I think that is the last, uh, appeal for the evening. And, um, do I hear any other business? Do I hear any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Wednesday night will, will, uh, six o'clock. Take care.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Bye, guys.
This conference will now.